Companies in the area. CD groups, that kind of thing. See, there was, so that very last page. Is a little bit more of a breakdown of that fiscal agent. It's a little more in depth. And that's actually what was used on one of the. Polk County projects, so it's got some terms that are a little more specific. But in general, that's. Kind of what we would be. Hoping to try to find someone that would be able to help us with.
Was this mainly just for this? Batch and build or is there other?
So that article is specifically based on the Polk County Batch and Build. I just wanted to throw that in, so there's kind of a general idea of what they're doing. Essentially, it's. A large state funded project. That's another thing very similar to ours, that state funded hundred percent funding for the project, so no cost to the farmer landowner. Which is always great. Does help to get this. Kind of stuff implemented. And yeah, there, we're trying to model very closely off of that because they've been so successful at pushing that project.
So have you guys spoke with? All the watershed management groups that are out there?
Yep, so a lot of these, a lot of the watershed management groups, we. Trying to think, a little over a month ago, there was a quarterly meeting for the one that kind of focuses around this area, but they also get further down.
Yeah.
Cover kind of the whole North Rec Group, and I remember the acronym, it's a big long acronym. But yeah, we talked with them, had a representative with ISG, which is one of the engineering firms that we're working with. That was actually at the meeting, spoke a little bit there. I work very closely with the secretary of that group. DNR Personnel out of Sac County, we talked. At least every other week, so. There's a lot of these groups are very familiar of what we're doing and will be attending these upcoming meetings to get more in-depth information.
Do you work with like Unforever or anything? I know they do a lot of.
Yep, so that has been. Typically, that leads more into when we're getting into like CRP type of. Which a lot of these. Inherently do end up getting some mix into that because a lot of these buffers by reactor locations are already in Sierra. So we do end up working with them quite a bit, especially as we're talking about CDs stuff. And they have provided bonding on similar projects as well.
Yeah, Jason would be a good one to have there. And then potentially Zach.
Yeah, we do have an RSVP list going, and I know other people were adding people as well, and I. I think the last time I looked was when Sierra was here last week, so. Check to see if there's some representative with them. As well.
Have you guys taken a look at the scope of Carroll County and kind of seen where some ideal spots would be and reach out to those private landowners?
Yep, so this. Last fall and into winter, I sent out eighty handwritten postcards to landowners that were specific handpicked locations. I got seven responses, so it was pretty limited. What we're doing a little differently on this one because batch and build, the idea is to try to create as efficient as possible. Is to break this up into the five specific sub-teams. And try to decide which one has the most potential. So we're not looking over this full object area, which is huge. We're gonna try to focus on a specific area without excluding anybody because the potential here is too. You know, after we get through this first. Whatever it may be, six to eight projects, we put potentially to the next. Next portion, and then the next portion. Idols has. Hinted at the, the idea of again continuing this project for another three years, so we could potentially afford years worth of this as well, so this. Hopefully will blossom into. Kind of. Almost an example for the rest of the state as well for how do we? Do this on a smaller scale without. All the people that a larger county might have on their disposal.
Let's see.
Awesome.
Does anybody have any questions?
So you're looking for a fiscal agent one?
So that is kind of the biggest thing that we are really struggling with.
Maybe start with soil water conservation.
They've been. Talked to about it on other projects, not specifically ours, and I. Think it was kind of. Loop one. Was what I've been told.
Well, I mean, I would think that that they're referring.
Yeah.
Better than what would really be ill.
Yeah, I think. Part of where that gets into is. Other projects that are currently going on. A lot of this area has, I believe, it's three overlapping state funded RCPP projects. Which are very similar to this, so it gets into. Concerned about workload as these projects certainly. So that's where I think they. Maybe questioned it.
I think we're gonna run into problems, I think a lot of people are real reluctant to do these.
Fiscal agent.
Just agents kind of reliability.
Okay, no, and that, that's, I mean, like I said, so Tanner Poles is who I work with at Idols.
So are they gonna be paying employees?
Yes, this is compensated. So it's not like, please just. Take on.
See, I guess that's where it gets involved, the workman's comp and all that.
Okay.
And unemployment, I'd say, once we get enough of the projects done.
Yep.
Then that goes back to the county, and that's where you're gonna find if having a hard time getting somebody to do this. But I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, and I'm planning to meet with Tanner either later today or early tomorrow, just to kind of go over some of the details. He's also available to sit down if we want to. Look further into this as well, if that's something potential. He, like I said, is a lot better.
No, that's okay, it's okay. I think having you here and kind of. Segueing into that conference that's this week, making sure we have somebody there to represent. Or meeting, if you will, to learn a little bit more about it. But I will forewarn you, jeans, right, when you go talk to board supervisors and you hear the word fiscal agent, we're all like, hmm? We don't want to have the county ad.
There's been some people that have gotten called off the drive.
Okay, as far as.
Especially when it comes to water.
Unemployment and stuff.
And, yeah.
Well, programs that. Tend to dead end, and then you got people get laid off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Zach, do you plan on attending that?
Probably can.
Okay. Maybe you reach out, Mike, do you want to send this email to Jason?
Yeah.
I thought, yeah, you've been sorry to make him on the list, so I think I got started, okay.
Jason might be a good one.
Yeah. Who's in charge of the?
Uh, you can do Tracy Buck or.
One of them should probably be there too.
John Danner. Conservation.
John Danner, Jason Christiansen, right?
John Danner, he actually works out of conservation, but he is our Fuzznick's Forever chapter resident.
Okay, perfect. And Tracy Buck, check her list, I might send me an email if you would have been on there, not really lost. Yep, but a problem. Perfect, yeah, and if you guys have any other suggestions, people can invite me. You know, like I said, we're gonna reach out to Sac County, County as well. We do dip a little bit into Green County, but with the focus of this trying to be kind of a smaller batch and build project. We really only have, I'd have to look again, but it's maybe five or six square miles. That gets into that area, so we're definitely focusing more on this one.
Perfect, thanks for coming and meeting with us and.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is to approve a fireworks permit for two zero zero six nine Olympic Avenue. And two. It's a country club.
It's a country.
Two five four nine six.
Two five. Nine four six. Noble Avenue. And that would be the Haverman's.
I'll make a motion.
Keep in mind, the country club's July fourth, and Haverman's on July. There's a motion, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The question carries, get some signatures. Item number four is mini or management annual updates. For seven four nine Woodford Creek Farms, section eleven Pleasant Valley Township, no changes. Seven four zero dash nine four Woodford, Woodford Creek Farm, section four Union Township, no changes. Jody Miners, section three Viola Township, Ottoman County, original plan. Stangle Site, section seventeen Washington Township. Original plan. Hite Farm, section six Roselle Township, original plan. JMK Finishers, section thirteen Evil Township, original, or no, I'm sorry, change crop rotation or optimum yields. Use Russells two and key indexes. Eighty-one Fork LLC, section thirty-four Jackson Township, Calhoun County. Changed crop rotation or optimum yields. Use Russells. Russells. To NP indexes. And we're to committee reports.
I can go first, two weeks ago, because we didn't meet the week before, last week. I did the radio and paper, Tuesday. Was policy council meeting. This went through all the program reports and the finances. Part of the biggest thing we talked about was the school district partnerships. Updates. And we are going to be. There's gonna be some changes around there that Jeff is gonna go to. Five classrooms now. With the one classroom that want to be offsite, that's a three-year-old. The shader. We're gonna eliminate that classroom because we do not have anybody signed up for it next year. And even on the waiting list, there's been nothing there. And Waki, we are doing a partnership with the Waki School District. For another full-time classroom. The other thing we did is approve transportation waivers. For, which is, we do it annually. Because of the partnerships we have with the school districts. And use the bigger buses, they don't have the child restraints and the bus, bus monitors. So we did have those. Did those waivers. Then on Wednesday, I had Rolling Hill. Board meeting. We had some reports from Turning Point, Suland Mental Health. And they were talking about, they are using the mobile prices a lot more for jails. And stuff, and. They are seeing an uptick in responses that they are. Drivers that. Calls that they're making. Then we did a whole bunch of contracts renewals for different. Providers like Horn Memorial Hospital, things like mental health. And the list goes on. And then. We also. Did Berry Hill, they had an increase to their contract because of some additional. School savers run. Classes. And then we had a report from Rolling Hills Advisory Recommendation to the Governance Board. And I think I told you this, that they are. I assume the governor signed this. But I'll file four seventy-one, which eliminate. That the sports two buyers only has forty-nine percent control vote on that board. So what the recommendation's been made by, by the. Advisory Board is that the. Counties of record would hold those seats. Which would make a lot of us not have a representation. But I think there's one county of record that is small, and I think it's Humble. Does not get a seat, and it's gonna go to Carroll County, because. We have so many mental health units here in Carroll County, and we're one of the higher populations. So at this point, Carroll County will have a seat on that board. What's gonna happen to the other counties, I do not know. I think. I think, personally, I think they should have a. Non-voting. Membership. So they can at least be involved and hear what's going on and have a knowledge. That is something that we have, something that we have to work on yet, so. That's where we're at on that. And then Plains Mental Health. Give a presentation on what they're doing. And then. Thursday had new opportunities, board meeting, went through the financials. I did an amendment on community service block grant. We did update our credit card process and information security policy. There again, then we went through all the stuff that I mentioned later, further. On policy council, and also through those things. We did change our. Remove the COVID nineteen health prices from our policies. Then we had, well, in that way of central out for a grant. They were guarding down in Waki. And increase of DOA legalization system of two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And we had also an addition of. Twenty thousand for light heat, and then another sixty thousand for light. These come from different funding sources on that. And also had a. Block grant of. Eleven thousand six hundred dollars off that, so. That was. A week ago. Then. This. Week, I had, or then last week, I had a CCDP orientation. And. Can't read my own, can't read my own writing. Today, I've had the construction, what else, construction review? And then Tuesday. We'll have a CCGP board meeting. Oh, I know, Friday, I was up here looking at the. Relocation, so.
Anything coming up this week?
CCGP Tuesday.
Did you have one of those in your report?
Yeah, earlier.
Okay.
No, I didn't, just that orientation.
Hello, so back on the twenty-second. I had RSVP foster grandparents board meeting. I also got ahold of the Lanesboro mayor. On some drainage assessment taxes on fifteen lots that the city had not paid. And the treasurer did say Tuesday night, they received the payment online. That was a good thing. Wednesday, on the twenty-fourth, Stephanie and I were in Des Moines. Wednesday, Thursday for the opioid settlement. Yeah, a lot of information, not sure a lot of it applied to what. The preventions that Carroll County may be using, maybe Stephanie can go more into that. Also, on the twenty-fourth. Had a meeting with the state of Iowa on prep for IT on the courts moving downstairs. Friday, on the twenty-sixth. Stephanie and Courtney and I met and talked about vault spaces. And some other things with the architect. Last Monday. Memorial Day, Tuesday, we had. Orientation, all five of us were there, CCGP. Two-hour meeting. Wednesday was the day before the move, we had the last meeting with IT and Dalton was involved in the courts. On Wednesday afternoon, they started the move. Thursday, they finished it. I believe everything is up and running. The movement company did a great job, Dalton did a great job. This week. We had a meeting this morning. Tomorrow. CCGP board meeting. At noon with Jean. Back to twenty-second.
I don't have much on here, so the Tuesday, May thirtieth, we had the CCGP meeting on Thursday, June first, I went and met with them. In at eleven AM, had a great meeting, learned a lot. Asked them to. Give us maybe a monthly. Monthly report on it, what they're doing, what they're like to.
Well, that'd be, yeah, they'll come here.
I didn't care if there's monthly or there is, yeah. Yeah, then regarding details. Have. I don't know if we've talked about that, but the Jason Christian had significant damage out of the. At the, did you get all that, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay. The trail project, you guys get that one, there's, they're gonna start June twelfth, which is their late start date on that. If not, there's penalties after that, hopefully starting Maple River and coming to Carroll, I'm hoping. And that is it, I think. You bet.
Okay, so. Decant, no updates. Hasma, I had. I had my first quarterly hazmat meeting on the twenty-fourth over in Fort Dodge. And there were some discussions on how they would respond to a solar panel farm fire. They were still looking into that, and if I do get, believe we have, we have three here?
I know there's one on one twentieth and seventy-one.
So.
Yes.
It could be, I don't, I don't.
They get information on that.
Nobody goes through us to apply for. I've seen nothing on it.
So. Would want to hit down with water and swimming. And then, see, they also discussed how they would respond to a CO2 pipeline leak. The biggest issue with that would be you cannot smell it. And I, I don't think Carroll is on the list of places where that was even a. Issue, they have a speaker from Van Dyse Supply Company in Webster City that gave a presentation on a facility. The different product hazards in their distribution facility. They store dry herbicide, liquid herbicide, and then they have twenty-five and thirty thousand gallon bulk storage terminals. Other hazards on their site were ammonia, propane, dimethylamine. Which is like ammonia, but it's newer and apparently it's made in Florida. Primary hazard would obviously be a chemical spill. And the closest one of those facilities to us would be in Harlan. Okay. No updates on the childcare, no updates on nine one one. County preparedness coalition I have today at one o'clock. Safety Committee, I still have a few departments left to speak with, and I'm gonna reach out to surrounding counties to see how. They are handling safety and safety committees. Workforce development. I have been digging into how to improve this a little bit. And I just wanted to share, I don't know if you all know, or if anybody that's listening wants to know, that if you go onto the Carroll County Growth Partnership website. You can click on careers, and employers can submit jobs. You fill out the form. If you're looking for a job, you have to double-click on careers. And the jobs will populate, there are only three on there now, so. That could be utilized more, I'm sure. Also, on the twenty-fourth, I attended the region's World Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meeting. And if anyone wants to go to the next one, that will be on the twenty-eighth. Of June seventh o'clock. I attended the CCPG orientation on the thirtieth. I also did follow up on the energy efficiency and conservation block program. Did you too?
No, I'm wondering how that came out.
So, okay. So there was a survey that needed to be filled out by, actually by today. It was very short, I did fill one out for Carroll County. And then I actually had someone reach out to me named Bill Boldy with Iowa League. He said that these resources are federal and state funded, and the money comes through the Inflation Reduction Act. And make them in the form of tax credits. He said the survey was just to get an idea of where current counties currently are. And an official application for the grant will be coming out mid-September. So. And then. Today was on that fall for the courthouse remodel. I think that's it.
One million, Courtney, I do have today RSVP volunteer recognition awards launch.
A lot of this was already repeated, so Scott and I did go down to the OVA network research. Meeting. Wasn't overly impressed. It's not really the direction I want to see Carroll County going with the settlement funds, we're gonna eventually, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, get some stakeholders together. And really hone in on prevention, I felt. The meeting was more of after the fact, kind of helped, not more of the prevention, so we'll see, we'll kind of bring everybody together, get some ideas, so we do have some funds available to do. And make account news for. Prevention. Then I did meet with CCGP last week, you guys talked about that, we just, they gave us the. Basic. Information on what that group does, and it was a good. Bring it back down to ground zero, what do they all do, how they're all involved and things like that, and how does it incorporate board supervisors and economic developer. We did not have a meeting, but we did meet with meetings last week, I was not here for the move, but we did meet with Jerry on some other. Items as well, this week I have newspaper radio. And then I have region twelve, excuse me, I have region twelve on Thursday. For executives. And that is it, Courtney, what do you got?
Next week, I do. Here's that most part. I know what it is, I just. So the twelfth of June at nine o'clock, I received a call from Colin Hornemont, and he would like to speak with the board supervisors regarding the two-mile limit. Sounds like Colin ended with the initiative, so I talked to Laura a little bit, because I thought there was some agreement between the city and the county. For that two-mile, and it's. Probably a long time ago, and she actually did some research on us, she's supposed to be sending me some information, so I can share that with you, so you guys. Know what it says before that they're here. But that's really all I have.
He's coming next week?
Yes.
I mean, are they expecting an action tomorrow, or just discussing? Okay, okay.
I did not put an action item on the agenda.
Thank you. No, he, he called me, he's not sweating action, he has to talk about.
For next Monday.
Yes.
I was just wondering if we need to.
So what does you expect?
What's that?
What's he expecting?
Just bringing to the table, I think. Get the ball wrong. This is the idea, I think, so.
So I thought it'd be good if you guys could see. I don't know if it's a twenty any.
I think it is, the last time I talked to Joan is.
So I might be able to find that if they got recorded. But that's how you guys, help you guys to see it.
No, yeah, the more information we have, yeah, the more informative it is.
Anything else, check online, but I don't think there's anything online.